Okay, good evening and welcome to the Halloween Board of Selectmen Meeting, October 2024. The fall season, my favorite season. More color and more beauty out there than you could imagine. With that said, for all of you in the audience, on your left, my right is the emergency exit that goes up the rear stairway that would lead to the rear parking lot of the town hall in the event of emergency. Don't get behind Jeff because he'll stop to talk. In the event that he does, you can go straight down the hallway and that will put you out by the firehouse, or you could go up the stairs behind the wall with the clock on it through the double doors and out, and that will put you out in front of the town hall on the Orange Center roadside of the town hall. Thank you for that. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll start with introductions. You want to introduce yourself first, sir? PJ.
PJ Shanley.
Good evening, Judy Williams.
Hand Denny Secretary to the board.
John Carrangelo.
Bill Crowe.
Mitch Goldblatt.
Okay, so we all see that we still know who we are. That's a good step in the right direction. Public participation. Public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. Selectman Carrangelo will give you no more than two minutes to speak to the issue unless it is waived by the board as a group. Is there anybody here for public participation? Do you like to speak first? You have to come up to the front. Up here. Yeah.
My name is Eric. I just wanted to provide a comment on thoughts, and forgive me if it's already been decided, I'm not sure if it's gone through already or not, thoughts on the Old Tavern Road cell tower that people have been talking about.
I'm going to speak to that shortly.
All right.
Go ahead, you say what you wish.
So, just a thought is that, you know, 100 years ago now, in the 1920s, and in fact, by 1925, America had just gotten to the point where we had 50% electrification of homes in the U.S. And there were plenty of people on both sides of that thought with, you know, putting up telephone poles, hanging electrical wires, and putting things in place for what we now know is a critical service that we rely on every day. And, you know, putting up another cell tower, unfortunately, there's no way to put a cellphone tower somewhere else. You are limited to put them in the spots where there isn't service. I had actually planned on having a map available of the other towers in town because I'll bet you that nobody in here probably knows how many towers are in town because you just don't see them. Once you're used to them, you drive by, and just like the telephone poles, they're there and they provide a critical service. But ironically enough, I can't pull that map up because there's also no cell service in this room. So I don't actually have that map available. But just, you know, in 2024, cell service is a critical infrastructure, and especially with the decline of home phones, it is the only infrastructure in place available for people to have for emergency contacts or any other availability that might be needed, as well as increasingly now towards home internet and other things which are critical, but mostly there as critical infrastructure for emergency contact purposes, so.
Thank you. I'm going to ask you for Ian because she needs your name, and if you're a resident, it's not just your address, so she has to.
Eric Meeson. M-E-S-O-N. 373 West River Road.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Mrs. Shaw.
I'm going to talk about the election again. Because, like, you know, the word has to get out because we're in full swing, so. Do you want me to sit down? Okay, let me start over again. So I'm here to talk about the election. Last month, I came and reminded everybody about the options you have to elect, to vote this, the election season. Right now, we are in full swing with absentee ballots. We mailed out about 600 of them last Friday, so people are paying attention on that option. So if anybody can't make it to the polls on Election Day for the particular reasons that are on the application, please stop by the town clerk's office and vote. You can come by and apply and vote and be done. And the next exciting thing that's coming up is early voting, which is starting October 21st, which will run till the Sunday before Election Day, which is November 3rd. It is available on the weekends, too. So all I can say is to explain this, we're getting a lot of calls on it, people are interested in this option. It's just like going to the polls. So when you show up, it'll be down here in the lower living, lower level meeting room in this area for all the residents to come. They can vote early and, again, exercise their right to do so during the two-week period. And like Mitch reminded us last week, or last month, there is a question on the ballot this year, and it is about absentee ballots. They are proposing that you choose to be able to vote absentee without an excuse. Right now, there are six choices on the application that you'd need to check off one in order to get an absentee ballot, and they're proposing that you would have to have no excuse. So be aware of that. It's at the top of the ballot, can easily be missed, so I wanted to remind everybody of those things.
And this room is handicapped accessible from the rear parking lot. There's a ramp and there's an elevator down to this room, so it is handicap accessible. I had somebody question me on that, so.
And the ballot box is wide open, so.
And the ballot box is, and they asked why they can't have it to drive up to. I said, no, because they'll run it over.
Questions?
Are you up in Monday for absentee ballots?
We are not, we're closed.
Okay.
But I'm required to empty out that box, believe it or not, so I'll be around.
Mary, I hate to correct you, but I think you just mentioned that election day was November 3rd, it's November 5th.
No, no, early voting is.
I said, then election day, November, okay.
Yeah, they, their early voting ends the Sunday before because they have to have that Monday to reconcile. And it is November 5th, yes. I didn't mention, I failed to mention that. Any questions, anybody?
Sure, if you can find, if you can find the key for it. Pat can't find, Pat can't find the key.
You can use it, the vote won't count.
All right, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else out in the audience? Seeing none at the table, come on Mitch.
It's October.
There we go.
October 26th. Saturday, October 26th, the Orange Recycling Committee is proud to present Shredding Day and more. We'll have it from 9:00 to noon in front of High Plains Community Center shredding documents. Please bring any documents need to be shredded. Please do not bring newspapers and magazines and things that can go into your regular recycling. Shredding is for documents, you know, papers that, you know, should be shredded. We're collecting mattresses as well and box springs. If you cannot bring them to High Plains, you can call 795-3906. That's Ken or Mary Ann at 203-795-3906. And the Lions Club will pick up a box spring or mattress for a $15 fee going to the Lions Club. The shredding day is being sponsored by the Rotary Club at no cost to our residents, although residents are encouraged to provide a contribution to the Rotary Club Scholarship Fund upon bringing your items for shredding. We'll be taking electronics as well. Electronics do cost us to be disposed of, so it'll be between $5 and $20, depending on the size of the electronic that you bring. Cell phones like $5, big PCs can be $20, iPad will be $10 in between. You can bring clothing or household items for the Orange community women and Buy Nothing Orange, who will all be stationed under the pavilion. And we have two late additions to our shredding day. The Mariel Tracy PTO will be collecting shoes and other footwear as well, and the Orange Drug and Alcohol Action Committee, along with the Orange Police, are also having a drug, National Drug Takeback Day from, that's from 10:00 to 2:00, out in front of High Plains. Everything else is 9:00 to noon. The drug takeback for prescriptions, expired medication, including pet prescriptions. Vaping devices are also accepted. I'm just reading the card here, although batteries should be removed, and that's from 10:00 to 2:00 in front of High Plains. This is all happening Saturday, October 26th, rain or shine.
You having food trucks?
No, but not a bad idea. One year, we had the Girl Scouts selling cookies, so it all works out.
Okay, then. Anybody else at the table?
Yeah, just quickly.
Mr. Carrangelo.
I just think this board should have a moment of silence for the people in Florida bracing for this massive storm. I have friends and family down there, and it's, this is going to be a beast, so if you would indulge me.
I would ask that you add the people of North, South Carolina, Tennessee, and all that also went, already went through it.
Yeah.
So, please. Okay. Thank you for that. That's, yeah, there, it's already starting. They're already flooding, there are already disasters down there, and they've told the people, try to get out if you can. Every road was gridlocked, they're out of gas, everything down there, but it's not going to be a good situation. All right, so now, seeing nobody else, I have a few things here. Bad week or two? We have several people that we lost that were large contributors to the town. Many of you remember Julie Strawhins, who was our tax collector for many years, passed away since we last met. Very unfortunate, but age catches up with you. And one that I forgot about that Mitch brought to me tonight was Dr. Vincent Borelli, who was our superintendent of schools here for many years. He lived over on Treat Lane, corner of Treat Lane and Old Country, passed away. And we also lost, and this one really surprised me, but a, two stalwarts, Gail Nixon, who I had just spoken to the week before at the fair. On Sunday, I was teasing her, and she passed away the following week, unfortunately, but went peacefully very quickly, which there's a lot to be said for that in this day and age. And our own OGAT coordinator, one of the originators of Orange Government Access Television, one of the founders of it and all, is Ron Davis, passed away. Yes, he passed away in the hospital the day before yesterday, I believe. So unfortunately, we lost some really huge contributors to the community. Very unfortunate. Everybody who volunteered at the Orange Country Fair. It was spectacular, we had one of the best fairs ever. I think that it was great and it was very, very successful. If the fire department would follow our lead, they would have no troubles at all. They'd be thrilled to death to follow us. Funtober at the Fairgrounds is being sponsored by the Orange Youth Services and Orange Parks and Recreation. Saturday, October 26th, rain date is October 27th. It's going to have Magic by Christopher, DJ Entertainment provided by Hughes Productions. This is for Orange residents only in this particular case, since it is sponsored and funded by our town departments. There is a trunk or treat where you decorate the back of your car all up and the kids go around and have the opportunity to get candy from many different people. I can see Jeff out there giving candy out now. There's going to be $3 hayrides, they're going to have a best decorated car prize. Jeff, if you still had that Carmen Gueye, you could have just filled it up and the kids could have just reached into it. There's going to be hot dogs, hot and cold drinks. See Mitch, they're having hot dogs and drinks. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. on the October 26th. There'll be a photo booth, games, crafts, and more. To register your car, scan the QR code or call 203-891-4790. A free raffle ticket and bag of candy will be for every pre-registered car, and they are looking for parents and family that want to provide, be a car for the trunk or treat part of it thing. They don't have too many signed up. Years ago, when this started, they had like six rows of cars for people, for the kids to go get candy, and it's kind of faded ever since COVID, so we need to give that a boost a little bit. Let's see. Oh, on October 22nd, it will be the 100th birthday for Mrs. Frances Martino Pagliaro, who lives down on Oakview. I know her well, she's a great lady. She's a, was a fantastic teacher for many years, and I know her family very well, and so we're going to wish Mrs. Pagliaro on October 22nd a happy 100th birthday. Send her a card or a note if you wish. Daylight Savings ends Sunday, November 3rd. Remember to set your clock back one hour before you go to bed Saturday night. Remember, spring ahead, fall back. Election Day, I think we already covered, but it's Tuesday, November 5th. All voting is at High Plains Community Center. Absentee ballots are available in the town clerk's office. Town offices will be closed October 14th in observance of Columbus Day, and Monday, November 11th for Veterans Day, but the transfer station will be open. I believe there'll be a Veterans Day ceremony down at High Plains, 11-11-11. Let's see, starting October 2nd, so that's already happened, the Orange Visiting Nurse Association will be conducting flu clinics at the community center. For more information, contact the OVNA at 203-891-4752. The last thing we have, Mitch thinks I forgot because I put the paper down, but I didn't forget. There was question at our last meeting, a lot of question and carrying on about a cell tower possibly being installed off Woodruff Road, right on the Orange-Milford line, and the property owner, upon review of documents submitted by Verizon, or one of their subsidiaries that builds the towers, they had changed maps, they had changed configuration, and even the access a little bit due to, all of a sudden, they realized there were wetlands, but then on the second map, poof, the wetlands disappeared, and it was all beautiful. And so Mr. Knight, who really didn't want to cause any hardship for people in the area, he's not that kind of a person, he and his council contacted the cell carrier and they are out of that contract, and the town of Orange received a release notice today from the sighting council. So that cell tower, for any of you watching at home that are wondering about or concerned about it, it has been withdrawn. But to what Mr. Meeson said earlier, the need for these is driven by us. This device here and many other devices, everybody has them, we think nothing of it, but you get mad and start to bang the thing on the dash or something when you can't get a connection. And, well, in certain parts of our town and other areas, that is a problem. So while you may not want it, I understand that, but there's also reasons to need it. So as technology changes, maybe it'll change, but if you all remember, oh, I don't know, 20 years ago, we were faced with, we were being told that the cell towers were going to become obsolete and it was going to become all satellites and you should sell your cell towers to us right away. Well, I didn't sell the cell towers and we're still collecting, currently, we collect about $385,000 a year, I think, off the cell towers that the town of Orange owns. So, and that goes into revenue that goes towards, helps offset what you pay for taxes. But, yeah, so that tower at this time has been withdrawn. Okay. Minutes. To consider an act upon the minutes of the September 11th, 2024, regular meeting of the Orange Board of Selectmen. Are there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If so, state page and paragraph. If not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Unanimous. Okay. First item under new business, to consider an act on the appointment of Amanda Zapata, Vargo Zapata, to the, to the Orange Board of Education to fill the vacancy till November 12th, 2027. She is replacing Mr. Crowe, who left the Orange Board of Education to join this board at the vacancy created by Mr. Oakenquist. So I would invite Amanda up if she so chooses to, huh? No. First, she's going to come up and say, tell, she's going to tell them a little bit about who she is. Eesh.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Amanda Zapata. Some of you may know me better by my maiden name of Vargo. My parents are very active in the town, and I'm sure many of you in here have a Jeff Vargo for Constable chip clip in your kitchen. I am homegrown, I went to Racebrook for elementary school, graduated from Amity, recently was inducted in their Athletic Hall of Fame. I then went on to my undergrad at Fairfield University, and then got my master's in elementary education from Southern. Before my husband Dan and I started a family, I worked at Peck Place for a couple of years. And now, fast forward a decade later, we're raising our family in Orange. Our two boys are at Racebrook right now, our daughter will be at Mariel next year. And I'm very passionate about traditional education, and I'm looking forward to helping keep those principles and values in our education system. Thank you.
Any questions for Amanda? Yes, Mitchell?
Question's not for Amanda, and I have absolutely no objection to Amanda being put in this seat.
That's good, because I wouldn't hear it.
But, the question I have is, does this seat get filled to 2027 or to 2025, and then we have to have a two-year term?
I was told it was to fill the unexpired term.
Okay, because there's times when we have to vote for.
Different ones are, fall different ways, so that's what I was told. If there's question on it, we can research that.
It just real, when you said 2027, it just sprung the question, and our town attorney's just walked in the room, maybe he knows off the top of his head.
No, he won't, I would have. No, that's right. Anyhow.
All right, I just.
We believe it's 2027. If for some other reason, you'd have to get chip clips sooner than later.
I know, guy.
Okay. So, anybody?
Did she fill that for three full years or only one year with a special expert?
Fills the unexpired term, I thought. Okay. So with that said, is there a motion to approve Amanda Zapata at this time to the Orange Board of Education to fill the vacancy created by Mr. William Crowe? Does that tear, wait there. Is there a motion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Jeff gets me all rattled. All right. So now I'm going to ask you to come back up and raise your right hand, and Mrs. Shaw is here for that purpose, so you will be officially sworn in, and then, then you're all set and you can call. Come on, Jeff. Wait a minute, wait for Jeff, wait for Jeff.
Oh, my goodness.
He stands right in front of Ashley.
I'm ready.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties to the best of your ability as a member of the Orange Board of Education to the best abilities to help me God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Grace is just going to stay there and make like she doesn't know.
No, you just have to get out.
Hey, you want me to get you out?
How much more abuse can you take?
I know. I'm out.
Okay. Item number two is to consider an act on the request to approve the bid recommendations for the 24-25 tree removal. Mr. Britton is in the audience. You all, I don't know if you all noticed coming in the back door, but there's, but the, the big tree is gone because UI is donating us two trees to the town, and one, I think Donnie's putting down near the tennis courts at High Plains, a more standard growing tree. And then over here, I think there's going to be some, we don't, he hasn't told me what it is, but a flowering tree of some sort is going to go there. But first, we have to get the, the root wall out of there, yeah, so. But anyhow, so with that said, what's this? Oh, that's plowing. So as you can see here, and there was no collusion, Denny Tree came in first by quite a bit, actually, if you compare Denny Tree to Stanley Tree, there's a huge difference, but that's called a in-town resident who values their town and all of that, as opposed to sometimes having to go outside, although there are some other in-town bidders here. So with that said, any questions for Mr. Britton? If you, if you'd, so, you can come up.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, the motion's made to accept Denny Tree service for this tree bid for $23,900 with an hourly rate of $200 on a bucket trucking operator, $75 an hour for chip truck, chipper and operator. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Stain? Unanimous.
Quick question, do we know how many trees are on that list? The fall list?
It wasn't as many, it wasn't the 96 or something, it's, was.
Thank you.
How many?
And the font is what?
We believe that, we believe, we believe there's, we believe there's about 75 on this one, so it's 20 less than the last one. So then this one, bids are open for snow plowing services, this is for the private contractors, seven trucks, which is what we normally hire, and you will see on the second page there who they've, who they've chosen. There are some different names as people come, yeah. But I guess they feel comfortable.
Just a question, Jim?
Yes?
Yeah, just, I guess maybe for you or for Bob, it sounds like all the bids we got were successful, there was no one, because everybody, everybody had to bid the same amount, we made it that way, correct? If it's a small, a small truck.
Mason dumps are one price and six-wheeler trucks are the other.
Right, we basically dictated what the price is going to be.
Correct.
Everyone who bid is going to be awarded, it looks like, right?
No, McAllen Construction, we didn't need the mason dump trucks, so they're not getting anything this year. And Donahue and Son offered three trucks, but we only needed one. So because we had more trucks offered than we needed, we went with the Orange businesses first, then the two businesses that served us last year, and then since Highway didn't need any more small mason dump trucks that McAllen was offering, we took one from Donahue, which is a new contractor.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. It's actually on the front, the bottom of the front page, what they are taking, so.
Motion approved.
Okay. Okay, motion Carrangelo, PJ second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Unanimous. Okay. Next item is to consider an act on request to authorize the first selectmen on behalf of the Board of Selectmen to execute the FFY 24 Homeland Security Grant Program Region Two Memorandum. This is a yearly thing, I think, that all of you know. Were there any questions on that? Okay, motion is made and seconded on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item five, discussion regarding the license agreements for rental of farm fields, town-owned property. Those, did everybody get those, too? Okay. So, any questions on those? There was question last year, or during the winter, as to the get-outs and so on, and those, some of those contracts. So, discussion?
Has there been any, anyone changing their options?
Well, that would be up to us.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking all of these, these agreements are, are something that are going to be carried on for the next two years, is what I'm saying. Or you have, or have you had heard changes?
There's no change in Steven Best Sputa there. There's no change that I'm aware of with Moncheski on the Wright Farm property. Let's see. Are we missing one?
There's four, we got four of them, Jim, I think.
No, I know, but I didn't know if Stevens were both on one. Oh, no, because it's multiple fields, but it's one lot. Okay. All right. So then Field View, this one is on the Racebrook Tract property. I have not heard anything different on that. That one grows corn for their cows. I know that. The only one that was in question, which Mr. Pizano emailed us on, was the one on Little Peck Lane, as I refer to it. And there was a question as to the termination, as I recall. It's on page three.
Which contract, Jim?
Oh, this is Field View. I'm trying to, where does this start? Yeah, it's the, Field View. Trying to say Meeting House Lane, it's titled on here.
Yep, yep, yep.
Wolf Park. On page three, up at the top, that was the question, the written notice, 180-day expiration of license term.
They had 90 days, you had 180 days.
Orange shall have the right to terminate Field View's rights under this option by giving written notice of such termination to Field View, not less than 180 days prior to the expiration of the license. So if PJ had spoken to me and John, both of them, about this one because of the study being done down at Wolf Park, and asked if we could do a one-year at a, one-year at a time license on this, and I don't see any problem with that. It's the only one that we would, because they felt initially that there's nothing going to happen there yet, because BNL is working on this, and they have quite a ways to go before they're anywhere. So both chairs had asked about making that one a one-year license was the only consideration. So when we vote on them, that would be for a year 25 license on that. So it would be a one-year at a time, which really isn't a big deal, quite honestly, because they use it for, mostly for sweet corn. They do, they do have some field corn in there for the cows, but mostly sweet corn in that field. And they do take very good care of it. So they have their cover crop in, and they're all set. So is that kind of, does that sound what you're driving at, PJ?
It would. When I was looking at it, like the first one for Tyler City, premises Tyler City, Lambert Road, two acres.
Vesputas.
All right. Number three, there's terminations of the license. Orange shall have the right to terminate the license for any reason. You think it would be simpler just to add that instead of the duration?
Well, there is, there is statute, though, that once a farmer has their crop planted...
With the exception of that, obviously.
They have, they have the right to harvest their crop.
I would never...
Well, I think, to make it, to keep it fair.
Yep.
Before I get healed, I see. You know, to maintain the equity in the agreement, should Orange decide to terminate, you know, the operator's right to harvest any planted crops should remain, right? So the agreement would, would terminate within whatever reasonable period of time.
Upon completion of harvesting.
Following the harvest.
Sure.
Right? Because, again, as it's written, technically, right now, and the 180 days and the 90 days, that was on the option. Well, that option was exercised, so that's not there anymore. So now it's, so now we just go down to, you know, it expires naturally, or do we have a right of termination? And so you have to look also, termination, paragraph 10. You know, it really says upon termination of this lease. Well, termination of the lease would be when it naturally expires, or when someone exercises the right, right? So this here doesn't say anything beyond that option period, right? So what we, what we should do is revise it and make it clear, you know, when it's going to terminate, because you want it to, you want it to follow, as Jim kind of said, you want it to be logical.
Sure.
So, and you want to do this with awareness that if you, if you're going to need it, let's say in January.
Twenty-six.
Right? That you're not going to, you're not going to do that. You're not going to enter into an agreement that makes it impossible for you to get out of because of this understanding that you're going to let the harvest come.
Correct. But I also don't want to put someone in a situation where they lose their crop, which, you know, is...
Statutory protection there.
Right. And that's why you need to kind of have a better understanding of what you need to land for, and you don't have that understanding yet.
Right.
Right? So that's why it's, it's easiest to plan once you know. Right now, you don't know, so whether it be a year or two years, it's the termination that you've got to be most concerned about, because your timing could be affected based upon the planting, right? So that's what you need.
So the one year's fine. I mean, we're both in agreement.
Well, we also, there's also, and I had spoken about it a long time ago now, there was that other group that were interested in that piece of land as an educational extension of, you know, program. And so that's, you know, something else, as your plan develops, that might be something that might be on the table to be considered also. I don't have that. I haven't attended your meetings. I've stayed at arm's length on it. But, you know, that's something that'll probably come up as a possibility also.
Okay.
You know. I'm going to have some other work done down there. We are, Mr. Britton and I have been talking on stuff, because this is taking a long time, and there's some things that have to be done, because I kind of waited, thinking some of it would move along, but it hasn't. So I got to work to get that water and electricity across from where it comes in off a hollow road, and then it goes up through the woods up to Tom's lots up there. So we got to go in across, kind of where the driveway just breaks out of the woods, really. There's a spot, and we got to go across that way to tap into water and electric there. And then that's going to come across, because we can't pave that roadway until that water and electric is under there, because the water has to go, you know, four feet down, so it doesn't freeze. So I was kind of waiting, but now we're going to, Mr. Britton and I talked about that, and we're going to move towards that. That's something that has to be done. So it'll, it'll cross, it'll go into the land where the playground is now, so that you have that power and water on that side prior to the paving. So as we get to the point where we, there will be some sort of a pavilion, a pavilion-type structure. No, don't, please, don't. Don't feed the bears. So there, at some point, there will be a pavilion-type structure by that playground for parents and children with tables there. So I got to get the water and electric across, just for that, if nothing else.
Okay.
So that's what we'll be working on. So if you see activity down there, that's what it'll be.
Jim?
So, yes, who called me? Oh, Mitch.
Several questions, comments.
Yep.
First of all, one of these has to do with the lot across the American Legion that we did not do.
We haven't done anything yet. It's not in here.
It's not in here?
Nope.
That was one of them, okay.
Nope.
I'll take that back then. So in answering what Vin was just talking about with PJ, I would suggest that the two agreements that are with the rights, excuse me, excuse me, with the Hines, be, Field View Farm, actually, be changed, that language about the 180 days, be changed to the same language as the other two, and just knock out that whole language and just make all four consistent.
Right. That's what Vincent said. That option is gone.
Okay. But that way, it's not even a question going forward. Second thing is, as we discussed last time, we had this discussion when we were talking about the parcel across the American Legion. My suggestion, and I feel pretty strongly about this, is that all four of these, we should put out for a proposal, request for proposals, or, and, and then we can come back here and make a decision as to the best proposal, as opposed to this one's worth $200, this one's worth $400. And as part of those proposals, I'd like to see anyone who does propose, and it could be obviously the people that currently are farming the land, as to whether they would be using the cannons or not. And I think that should all go into our decision as to what happens with these agreements going forward. So that, I would think we should do it that way, as opposed to just extending the licenses.
There's plenty of other options besides the bird guns, but if the bird guns are licensed by the state of Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection.
No, 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 I understand that. And we would decide whether, you know, it may be a decision where, just that they would let us know. So we make that conscious decision that, yes, this particular parcel will allow the bird guns, cannons, whatever you want to call them, to, on this parcel, but we have an alternative for this parcel, which may not have the cannons, and make a decision on that, and also look at how much they're willing to bid for these parcels to be farmed. I think it's only fair to...
They're not going to bid much. That piece of land that's there across from the Legion needs a lot of, it's going to take a lot of stonework.
Well, as you said, that one's not even on here, but the other...
No, it's not. It will be, though.
Yeah, okay.
Because I'm going to get rid of it. It's not going to sit.
Well, it's fine.
Again, somebody's going to get it, so that it...
But I think all four of these, we should see what it's worth. If it's worth $200 a year, then it's worth $200 a year. If somebody else bids 300 or 400, maybe in our best interest to do so. If someone bids, you know, 300 with cannons, and somebody else bids 295 without cannons, maybe we decide to take the lower one without the cannons.
Okay. Mr. Pizano? It's, it's the age that hurts.
Tom Pizano, 523, Taylor Road, Orange, Connecticut, and president of Orange Soccer, 37 years, and actually the father of Fred Wolf Park. I feel like I gave birth there as a man. Long story short is, Vin, as you know, the contract lease agreement for Fred Wolf Park was extended into, last time you renewed it, into, you know, January, February, March, and it would accommodate the timing necessary. So there is time to, to give notice and say you're not going to do it. On the Fred Wolf Park issue, this is long overdue, and everybody knows that. And for two reasons I'm up here. One, to say, I am finding out that Mariel Tracy's becoming harder and harder for me to run a program. We have all the grass in a mess right now. I'm going to have to invest money into it, and I'd love to move that someday to Fred Wolf Park. And that isn't going to be soon, because we're dragging our feet, guys, on this planning. And I got you, you're doing a good job. I'm not complaining. It's good that we have it. But I would like to see the cornfields, I would like to see the cornfields bid, because I want to bid the cornfields. I would like to bid Fred Wolf Park fields. I would farm it for it. I can do all that, and I think it should be an open bid for everybody to farm. I'm having a lot of complaints right now for parking. We have put it off. We have a lot of people playing fire in that park for a number of reasons, to accommodate the number of children that we have. So, long story short, is I think we have a bigger need than what is being presented to the ad hoc Fred Wolf Park Committee for parking, for other reasons. We can do some emergency stuff. I'm getting the complaints, you know, and I'm also saying, I'm in the business of farming, so I'd like to bid the farm at Fred Wolf Park and see what it's worth.
Well, you could start it.
I want to ask Tom a question, though. Tom, before you go.
Yeah.
You know, my, my thought process about, you know, having this bid would be for farmers to bid. If you are indeed a farmer.
Yep.
And you are the successful bidder, I would expect this property to be farmed and not parked on.
Exactly.
Okay. Because you just, you put the two together, so I want to make sure we're clear on that.
We have tractors. We can farm it. We can put a crop or whatever you need.
Tom, I just want to say on the record, too, we are absolutely not dragging our feet in any capacity. Well, you just said it.
Well.
I mean, you can't say it and then bring it back.
Say you didn't say. What's your name?
I mean, you know how hard we're working. You come to the meetings.
I know.
We're doing everything that the consultants are asking us to do.
We didn't do the safety study as they recommended, but...
We absolutely did.
Well, we have concrete barriers. I had to call the Highway Department, because we needed to light those fields, and we put cones, if you notice. I put illuminated cones. Thank you, Donnie Forer. I know you're watching. So that, you know, that's creating, you know, a lot of issues, and we're solving them. We have lights out there right now, and it's a dangerous place to be, with concrete barriers. I was worried about a car driving into it. So I actually...
Well, then maybe you shouldn't be having the program after dark.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, we should do something better.
Yeah, you don't have the program after dark.
Well, the need is there for kids to practice.
There's a lot of needs out there, but has to fit the plan.
People could slow down, too. If they're running into a concrete barrier, they're going too fast.
Yeah. No, we're not arguing that. I'm just saying, we need to proceed. For those of you that don't know, this is taking 24 years to put two outhouses and four fields, and several years since we had lacrosse fields, and I'm all for it.
Oh, I'm glad to see the old Tom Pizano is back.
Thank you.
We had, we had one month that was complimentary, and the rest is just...
I know you missed Dan Pressnick, so I'm glad that I'm back.
You're taking up his space, I'll tell you that.
Have a good day. Appreciate your help, guys. I know it's all volunteer. I volunteered for 38 years, so...
That's good. And I volunteered for 65. Big deal. Yes, Carla, would you like to speak?
Carla Birmingham, 309 Pine Tree Drive. I just want to make sure that any further development of the Fred Wolf Park coincides with the information we got from the U.S. Army Corps. And it says that I also wish to point out any further development of the 68-acre parcel, should it include any additional future impacts to federally regulated wetlands, tennis, such as adding for tennis courts, stumping, grading, or filling of wetlands for other sites. These proposed impacts will need to be coordinated with us prior to any construction, as such impacts would likely also require permit from the Corps. So with the fact that I get flooded all the time, and if I ever got that Oxford water, I think my house would have gone under. But in any event, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with the Army Corps of Engineers and also the state.
BNL is aware of that, and if it is stuff that is wetlands impacts, they are aware of it. We have it.
April 18th.
Of what year?
2018. That's when they were going to build the road.
Yeah, yeah. No, there was a Supreme Court decision that came out last year that actually removed the wetland. There was a Supreme Court, U.S. Supreme Court decision that came out last year that kind of modified the definition of what a wetland was, and basically, you know, for federal purposes, not for state purposes. And so we would just have to look at that decision in relation to that decision. We may have to ask them to revisit that decision.
Okay. I have no problem with that. I'm just worried about where's all that water going to go.
Yeah, no, the water is, the water is, it's the wetland. So I think we have to contend with the water regardless of the wetland.
Yes. And my, my house didn't flood before we had Fred Wolf Park.
That's true. Thank you, Carla. Okay, item six. No, that was discussion. No action. Vincent will correct those, or Owen, somebody will correct those. Okay, item number six is to consider...
Are we going to do anything with them?
That was just a discussion. They're going to be corrected before you vote on them, probably in, I don't know, December, January?
All right. You say vote on them, does that mean we're not going to go through any kind of bid process? You're going to just bring them back, back the way they are?
I didn't think you were going to bid all of them. I thought you talked about the lot across from the American Legion for bidding.
No, I don't see why we don't bid all of them. I honestly don't. I mean, there's other, there's other farmers in town. There's other people in town. I mean, I'm not, no offense to Tom, who wants to farm this. But I think they, I think they should all be, I think they should all be sent out to bid and for proposals, for people to...
You can do that. Woodbridge does that, and it's open to town operators.
Okay.
So I'll get a copy of Woodbridge's bid request also, so that you can see what it is. I'll actually email it out. It doesn't require an action by us, so that everybody knows, and we can do that. we can do that.
I think what we, we looked at with the, the parcel before we decided not to have it harvested this past year, but we looked at three different proposals, and I like that idea of looking at three different or more, or how many, even one, proposals for each of these parcels to determine what the best use of each parcel is and for what purpose. All for farming, would have to be farming, but it might be different types of farming, it might be different, we might get more money, we may get less. But I think it's, I think it's for, in transparency situation, I don't see why we just continue to, to hand out for 200 or 400 dollars a year, particular parcels, without giving other people a chance to take a look at them and make a proposal to the town. And if we decide to stay with what we got, we decide to stay with what we got, but we, we've looked at other proposals that come through. I think it's only fair.
And I have a question, who would be the judge on that? Who was, who was gonna be the one that says this is gonna be the best use for that particular land?
We would. We would.
It's only one person at the table that could do it.
Well, I think you've got.
So, that's, that's another, you know, point of, to, to look at. I mean, we're just, you know, you just open it up to anybody, you've gotta understand what they're going to do, what their needs are, and, you know, granted, if they're gonna rent it, they rent it, but at the same time, there's certain things that they've gotta follow on.
Absolutely. Yeah, I do, I, I do. And I think we started to look at that the last time, when we looked at the parcel across the American Legion and determined not to do anything with it right now. I don't see any problem with looking at all four of these parcels the same way and have this board make decision on it, just like we make decisions on who's gonna cut the trees and who's gonna get dump trucks and everything else we do. I think we can make that decision. I think we make the decision based on what we see. And obviously, the people that have been farming it now would have an advantage, they know the property, they know what it, what it, what it takes, and would probably give us a, a reasonable proposal. But I think that proposal should be looked at in, in fairness against other proposals, if there are any. There may not be any, but then we at least put it out there and allow, allow anybody who's, who's a, you know, can farm it, to farm it.
All right, there'll be an extension of lease, lease time, too, if you do that. It wouldn't be a two-year lease, they'd probably go to five-year leases, if you're gonna do that.
Depends on what they're gonna be using it for, of course.
Well, no, the bid would be, this piece of land is up for bid, it's a five-year term. This is what you would pay, kinda thing.
Why would it be any different than what we have in front of us? Why wouldn't it be two years?
You're, you're changing the game, I'll change it, too.
Okay. Well, I think five year, five.
There's some other things that need to be considered if you're gonna do it that way.
Okay.
All right, that'll come back to us.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem. Item six, again, to consider an act on the request to waive medical benefits for 31 town employees. The list is before you, I am not reading them off in public. Just so those at home understand, our health insurance plan, some people who are working for the town have retired or carry, carry benefits from a spouse or another member, partner, and so, some people bow out of taking the health insurance with the town of Orange, and if they're out for the entire year, it's a $2,000 stipend they receive at the end of the calendar year for not taking the health insurance. In the event that it's at some fraction within the calendar year, it is prorated quarterly. So, all those in favor? Pose, staying unanimous. To consider an act on the schedule of the regular Board of Selectment meetings for 2025. Okay, all in favor? When's the fair, though? Wait a minute.
2020.
Is it?
It's about the week of the third.
10th. Yeah, the fair would be the 21, 22, it looks like. Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Only for me, the magic chef. Thank you. Huh? Hey, you're all welcome to come in, you're all welcome to come in the kitchen and work with me, whenever you want. Let's see. To consider an act on request to approve the tax refunds totaling $12,146.48. What's this? Oh, this is from John, this is something else, this goes with that over there. All in favor?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. That's done. Unanimous. I guess I gotta put with this over here. Okay, you'll see there's one appointment on there for Amanda Zapata, we already took care of that.
Yep.
Committee's pension board.
No report this month.
Okay. Fred Wolf Park Ad-Hoc Committee, anything to report at this time?
We will be meeting in November. We are working with B&amp;L on and off the playing field and continuing to do so. Thank you.
Very good. Now that Mr. Kraut is on the board, I'm hoping that we can revitalize the Personnel Committee. We've had some bumps in the road there, but generally, we meet during the day, and whether it be morning or some other time, but it has to be during working hours because if it's employees that are union members, they have to be able to come during the regular hours. Would that work for, generally, we've had one of each party to sit with the first selectman for that committee. Is that a possibility? Well, we could, it would, it would flex, it wouldn't be, some months we meet, some months we don't have anything.
Yeah.
But if we could do it like morning?
Perfect.
Would that work, Bill? I don't know. Okay. All right, 'cause I would like to have that put back together. I keep facing issues and, you know, with the challenges we had, you know, Ralph's health and all, it kinda walked apart there a little bit. Okay, very good. I'm gonna ask Bill and PJ to be the two members with me, and then we'll, we can go from there.
Good.
Good.
Excellent.
All right, thank you. Last item we have is gonna be very involved here a little bit, there's, I got a pile of paperwork here, we killed several trees. Close the regular meeting to convene the executive session. Two, discuss strategies with respect to the deployment of security personnel or other devices in accordance with Connecticut General Statute Subsection 1-2106C, and to discuss a matter which would result disclosure of public record or information therein that is exempt from public disclosure in accordance with General Statute Subsection 1-2106E. And I'd like to invite Finance Director, Mr. Siffarelli, Town Treasurer, Mr. Williams, Attorney Weaver, and Attorney Marino, all into the meeting with us. Is that all, somebody's make that as a motion?
So moved.
Yeah, second.
Okay, take a five-minute adjournment if you want to take a break before we go into that, and we'll go in, it's 8:01.
All right, then you get one.
Okay, and thank you, everybody at home. We are back from executive session at, it looks like 8:55 to me. We had discussion on a, lengthy discussion on a financial issue face, facing the town of Orange, and we will be scheduling a continued meeting on this. We are going to try to reach out for a meeting on October 29th, which will also be an executive session. But before we adjourn tonight, I would like to wish my fellow selectman a happy birthday. He's gonna be turning 67, a couple, a couple days before I, my birthday.
Turn, turn how much?
65.
Okay.
So, just 'cause I have more gray than you, but happy birthday, Mitch. I know this is, this is our month.